Good morning and welcome to the January 22nd, 2025. Good morning.
I think so.
And welcome to the January 22nd, 2025 City Council Meeting. We're going to begin with the invitation from Councilmember Hopkins, followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
Now we can please. Dear Jehovah God, I come before you this morning with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community. I ask for your guidance and wisdom as we gather to discuss and make decisions that will impact the lives of our fellow citizens. Grant us the clarity to see the needs of our community and the courage to act justly and walk humbly in our service. Bless each member of the council and help us to work in unity and seek the common good above all else. I pray for those in our community who are in need, those who are suffering, and those who are working to make a difference. Thank you for the many blessings and help you have already bestowed upon our city. I ask for your continued favor and protection as we strive to build a better community that reflects the love and justice, because I believe the mission is possible. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to begin with the pledge from November the 13th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
As much as I win, second by McHale, or a little bit of favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries. All right, we're going to come down for some awards. All right, we've got some first awards that represent 55 years of service in the City of Tyler. We'll start with Dan Johnson, 25 years of service. Next, we have a petitioned deputy living for 15 years of service.
Mayor, she says.
It's 20 years. It's supposed to be 20.
Oh.
Yeah.
15 years. 20 years.
She's too young there.
I'm bringing it off here. Lance Uriah, GIS coordinator, 20 years. And Lance, story of City of Tyler, 15 years. And now we're just, I want to thank these employees, 30 years of service. Some people, young people kind of, that's a mental. But sometimes they come around and God be God. It's so good to see people work for the city for so long. 20 years, 25 years, 15 years, whatever it is, but still have another 20. So thank God for representing you guys. All right, then we're going to have one more award for. If the event work programs, just something stupid on this.
Uh, do you need something? I mean, no.
We are. Is that possible?
Yes, yes, sir. We elected you.
You know, we have a program here in Tyler, this is the baby to work program. And it started several years ago when it's been a COVID and has a program. And people bring their babies to work. And when they come into a presentation in council, they lift their baby at the office. I see it, it's not. And their coworkers take their baby. And whether it's shaving diapers, or playing with the baby, or whatever it is, they take care of the baby. And one of the reasons it's been so popular is just why don't you spend time with your baby at work? And it's just, it's been a fantastic program. So Colleen has completed six months of service for the City of Tyler. Colleen Justin. I think Tyler, I think we want that friend. Although.
Oh, my God.
Brown, brown.
I joke.
Everybody left? Kedrick, you must run everybody off? Yes, look at the effect. So much for a packed house. All right, we're going to begin with P1, Kedrick.
Mayor, council, you have had on P1 before you. This is a presentation item. It's a request the City Council consider hearing a presentation on the collection of property taxes by Lime, Limebarger, Grogan, Blair, and Sampson. And we have Mr. Jim Lambeth, who's an attorney there at the firm, who's going to give you all a presentation of their activities. So our recommendation is just to hear a presentation by Mr. Jim Lambeth. And I'll turn it over to him.
You know, Jim and I talked earlier and requested that he do this presentation in five minutes. And he says he doesn't know if he's capable.
He can't stretch it.
If it's over five minutes, it's on him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it.
We believe in you, Jim, you can do it.
We can do it, we can do it.
I was at commissary court yesterday, it was 30 minutes.
You may have heard the preview. I'm glad you have, you'll know the questions to ask. Listen, council members, Mr. Mayor, staff and administration, yeah, we're pleased to work in the community where we live, where we raise our children, where we raise our grandchildren, and where we, we are absolutely dedicated to continue the service. I've had the joy and the pleasure of working for this community for 30 years and 25 of it doing this. And so I appreciate that opportunity and we do not take that lightly. With that, we'd like to give you the report. And let me start, let me see if I can figure out how to work the clicker. But let me start by introducing our staff. We've got photographs of them, but I also have several of them here in the room together with us. Kevin Dunn is one of our attorneys out of Tyler office. I believe he is one of Mr. Henny's constituents. We have Kim Perez, who is our litigation manager. We have Haley Perez, who is a student at UT Tyler, taking a class and is here to observe City Council. She also works with us part-time, scanning our old documents. We're fully digital now. Let's see, in the back row over here, we have Olga Salinas. And Olga is our area manager. And basically Olga's the one who works litigation. She's moving the files, looking for individuals, trying to find folks. Next to her is Candy, Candace Dillon. And Candace Dillon works our post judgment. And once we've taken a judgment, Candy handles the tax sale, she handles the resale. She's the person that the buyers deal with, and she posts it, and you've got all that good information. Next to her, we have Shell Mora. And Shell is our file manager. Shell's job is to produce the documents. She actually gets them e-filed with the court, she works directly with the courts. She's our liaison to make sure that everything that's supposed to be entered legally gets done legally. Shell is a one-class at the office. Next to her is Barbara Bush, not wearing her pearls today. Ms. Bush is our client liaison. What she does is she's working, taxpayer liaison, she works directly with the taxpayer. She's that front-end person. Her office is right next to the front of the tax office. So they go around the corner to the tax office, and they're delinquent. Tax office needs to send them somewhere, they send them about 10 steps over to Barbara's office. Barbara sets them up on payment agreements, monitors those payment agreements, cajols, discusses, works them through their issues, has to listen to a lot of taxpayers. That's Barbara's main job. Next hers, JT, John Thomas. John Thomas is another one of our attorneys working out of the Tyler office. My signature goes on the paper, but John Thomas actually looks at the papers. He's reviewing our litigation, he's actually doing some of that research and all of that work that it takes. In addition to them, we have several other attorneys working out of the office. They're in our presentation, I won't belabor you. We're not, we all touch your files, we all touch City of Tyler accounts. In addition, there are probably a dozen other people that touch City of Tyler accounts. But I just wanted to introduce to you the folks that we have here today. Got a photograph of our office there. We have over 39 people, and I think we're up to about 42 right now, full-time. We probably have another eight or 10 part-time working out of our Tyler office. Little old Front Street in Glenwood is where we are. Some of you have been to the office, you've seen it, we're in the backside of the Cotton Belt Building. We have been there for over 35 years. We started working for the entities here in 1982, under a different firm name. We were Williams and Van Pelt back in those days. But we have a payroll in this community of almost $3 million. It is a significant little piece of the service economy in Tyler, Texas. This is our legal team, good breeding about all that, there's a bunch of attorneys, except for one thing. I say they are not just a bunch of attorneys, we are an IT firm with a few attorneys. We have far more people in our IT department, I'll talk a little bit more about that. This is a big data business, and we're involved in getting big data and working that to your benefits so that we can collect accounts. Moving over to our Smith County team, I've introduced most of them, so give you a better chance to look at all of those other folks. There's two others that are not with us today here that are over in the office working. DeeDee Holmes is our file manager, she worked some of the accounts in Smith County, does a very similar job to what Shell does, she files directly with court, creates documents, and is involved in creating our files and building all of that digitally. Julie Wilson's our bankruptcy specialist, and on your behalf, we file claims in bankruptcy court where someone files bankruptcy. We've had another big box store file bankruptcy just yesterday. So we've been doing a lot of that lately. Retail is a little bit in trouble on the street, meaning retail is probably not a problem overall in the economy, but on the street, meaning their physical brick and mortar presence has become a little bit of a problem. And so we have a lot of those bankruptcies. We go through these phases in our economy. We've gone through a phase where we had oil and gas service companies back in 2010, 11, 12. We had a lot of builders and building-related products back in 2008, 10. All of those are phases in the economy currently, we're working through the brick and mortar bankruptcies. On your behalf, what we bring to the table on that is a national bankruptcy presence. And I'll give you an example of that. When Pilgrim's Pride filed bankruptcy back in about 2011 or 12, that bankruptcy, you would have thought that there wasn't a Tyler aspect to that, but there was. The product in the storage warehouses here in Tyler primarily, and the grocery store warehouses, was still owned by Pilgrim's Pride as part of that bankruptcy. When we aggregated your claim, along with the other entities' claims in that bankruptcy, we aggregated over $24 million worth of local property tax claims. That made us a big credit. That put us at the table. We were right there with their banks and their bankers and their lenders. You get that value when you have a firm of the size that we have, because we aggregate those things. Let me tell you a little bit more about our values and our local presence. I'll patch through that slide. We are involved in a lot of local activities. That is a part of where we live and part of what we do, including paid, which is the old Literacy Council. That is their new name. We're involved with Texas College, we're involved with the local 4H and FFA in the Junior Livestock Show. A lot of the things that you would value in your community, we value also, and we participate. Clean Up Tyler, all of those different events that have transpired in our community, we try to help out with those. We value our clients and we value the communities we live in, the opportunity to serve and represent you, and it's important to us. We value our people, giving them innovation and resources necessary to get that job done. And we value our community and take pride in being able to give you the kind of impact that you need so that you have a dedicated set of resources to be able to do the most important thing that you do, which is provide those very necessary city services. All right, moving on to the delinquent tax collection process. And I'll tell you, this is one of those things that, all right, I'm going to back up just a little bit. This is just one of those things that, whoops, it's not going forward. We'll get you back to the legal services we provide. Delinquent tax collection is the primary thing that you see. That's what you'll see in your budget, that's where the revenue is, and that's the service that gets us paid. We're paying on a fee that is an add-on fee. So no, not a dollar of what would go to the City of Tyler in revenue is paid back to us. It is added on July 1st, for the most part, as a 15% fee, that is added on top of any delinquent account that we collect. Once we collect it, we're paid that fee. So that does not come out of the City of Tyler's coffers. So it is not a fund or anything that you have to fund, it's funded by the delinquent taxpayer themselves. In addition to filing delinquent tax cases and collecting delinquent taxes, we also support you by defending you where your file, where suits are filed in state court or district court or federal court against you related to delinquent taxes. We have suits like that where we defend the City of Tyler with other entities in Smith County. We also do the appellate legal services on behalf of you in those cases. And then we also do work with legislative initiatives and support for legislation related to delinquent taxes. Anything that's add-on taxes, we're involved in that. So help us or let us help you be a resource if you want more information on legislative effects of delinquent add-on taxation. We also teach truth and taxation course. Members of city staff come to our truth and taxation, we do that just before the tax season begins. We try to do that in May so that we set out that calendar where you're setting your tax rates. We do, we teach the appraisal district and the Smith County Tax Office their continuing education. All of those things we provide for free as an add-on service, because we'd like to be subject matter experts in that area and help you with those kinds of issues. And then finally, that bankruptcy representation that I talked about. Now, let me talk a little bit about the delinquent tax timeline. And we do this, you know, not to, you know, belabor the point, but to understand, January 1, there's a lien filed against all property, not filed, but a lien exists against all properties for delinquent taxes. So with January 1, 2025, there's a lien against your property for taxes that you have not been billed on yet, you've not been appraised for it, and are not due yet. But that lien exists. We have a lien for 2024 taxes that happened on January 1 by law, and that's the taxes we're currently paying currently. By the way, this is the last month to pay 2024 taxes without any penalty or interest. So the end of January of this month is the last day to pay. And then currently, we're collecting 2,023 taxes. So we're in arrears, we're over 18 months in arrears before those come to us. So it all begins with ownership and value on January 1. On April 15, renditions are due for business personal property. And about April 15, the appraisal district sends out their notices of appraised value. So they tell you, or tell the taxpayer, what that proposed appraised value is, and then protests need to be filed on or about the 15th of May. So if you don't agree with your values, then you've got until about the 15th of May to file that protest. And then the certified tax bill should come out around July 25, and that's when the entities, the City of Tyler, gets their appraisal values. And from that, you can start working your revenues into your budget, and you figure out what those appraised values are. On or about October 1, or actually sometime there about September 1, you set value, or set tax rates. And on about October 1, tax bills go out. That tax bill goes out and it's paid between October 1 and the end of January. So that's that cycle that we're ending right now for 2024 taxes. And on February 1, it's delinquent. If it's BPP, Business Personal Property Taxes, then those taxes have a delinquency that's going to be April 1. If it's July 1, or if it's real estate property taxes, they have a delinquency date of July 1 where they're given to us to collect. So we start the early collection of business personal property, because that property is very movable. It is inventory, it is equipment, it can leave the jurisdiction very quickly. I'll give you one example. We had one business like that that we had to go look at. We look at those on February 1, we're given those on April 1. But on February 1, that business was closed and gone. And it was a large, large delinquent account. And it was gone, but we were able to find the business ownership down in the woodlands, down outside of Houston, deliver them a tax statement, negotiate payments, and get that paid. But had we not done that early, we may not have been able to find anything related to that. Real estate doesn't leave. So because real estate doesn't leave, it's not on as rushed a timeframe. So we do have to work the business personal first. So on July 1, we get those taxes to collect. We begin our process. The delinquent tax accounts are turned over to us. We analyze the role, we look at the largest to the smallest on July 1. So we create the working tax role on July 1. At that point, we start to identify accounts that are protected. Protected accounts would be an account like a bankruptcy, or an account that has a deferral on it. If you're over 65, if you're disabled, disabled veteran, you can defer payment of your taxes if you meet that criteria on your homestead. If there's a deferral, we can't follow suit, and we don't pursue it for a judgment, and we do not set it for sale. We look at any account that's over 65 similarly, because we know they may get a deferral. So those properties are protected, and we identify them as protected accounts, as well as properties in bankruptcy. It doesn't mean you won't collect those taxes, it doesn't mean we won't collect those taxes. What it means is we can't collect them now. It's deferred, it is pushed off into the future. It also has a much reduced interest rate of 5%. And it's very interesting, if you look at the deferrals, some of our largest deferrals are often accounts that you would not suspect will not be in a deferral or not be paid. They're not often the smallest or most economically least valued properties. They're often extremely high-valued residences. And that is a way in which individuals seem to be using it that is not really related to what the intent of that statute was, which was to protect over 65 homeowners from losing their homes. Very interesting. All during that process, we conduct mailings. If it's a return mail, or a bad address, or a lack of an address, we go out and buy really big data to go and utilize those tools to find individuals. If it's important for us to use those tools, we have some of the best tools available. Because our firm is collecting billions of dollars of delinquent receivables, we're able to buy that data at pennies on the dollar compared to what other firms would be able to buy that data for. So we're able to scrub that data more often for every single mailing, and we are able to send out more mailings based upon data. So if we get an address for someone, it may be a good address, or we may have to test it. So we're able to test multiple addresses on any bad address or returned address. In a minute, we'll look at your role, and I'll show you why there's so much money sitting there in those bad addresses. As we do that, there's a goal there involved in those mailings. There are three things that we have to do in property collected, property tax collected. The first is we have to get on notice, and that's that process of finding good addresses and mailing. The second thing that we have to do is we have to get them motivated. Our motivation comes in our letters and the forms of our letters, our phone calls and our visits. We have to motivate them to want to pay those taxes. And then the third thing's out of our control, they have to have the ability to pay those taxes. When those three things come together, then we collect. If those three things do not come together, we do not collect. So the goal is to get all of those together at the time in which we can get those paid. Then we move on through and trying to contact taxpayers, site visits and phone visits and letters. JT and Olga go out and do personal visits on business personal property in between that April date and all throughout the weather months. We're doing that primarily through the summer. And then those individuals and those businesses that are delinquent, we hand them a tax bill. We walk it to them and hand them a tax bill. We knock on the door, we talk to them, we call them. We don't want anybody to think that they don't have a good notice, that they don't know that those taxes are not paid. We want to make sure that they know, because the next time we come, we're not going to ask. The next time we come, we have to come with a tax form. But that way, everyone has notice, and we want to set them up on a payment agreement, we want to get it paid. So it's one of those where you have to get them noticed, but you also have to be firm and you have to be fair. We do that in the dozens of dozens of dozens of businesses. In addition to negotiating payment agreements, if we've identified those accounts that they've not responded and won't respond, then we begin litigation. Litigation is the last resort, but a necessary resort, because those letters and that motivation won't work if we don't back it up in litigation and taxes. You have to know that there is a consequence to not paying them. And of course, what we typically sell is vacant abandoned properties, and we'll give you some examples later. We rarely ever have to list anything that is a homestead for sale. We rarely ever, I mean, it is almost, almost nonexistent. I won't say it's never happened, I won't say it almost never happens. But we sell a lot of estate property, a lot of vacant abandoned estate property. And then ultimately, if you have a tax sale and no one buys it, we have a resale process. And that resale process is, goes on and on and over and over. In addition to that, we've had the Smith County, City of Tyler, Tyler Junior College, and Tyler ISD Housing Infill Program Interlocal. It's been very successful through the years, and we'll talk about a little bit of that success. I've talked quite a bit about payment agreements, I just want to let you know we often talk to the taxpayer about their rights to exemptions. If they're over 65, it's their homestead, or if it's their homestead and they don't have that homestead exemption, the first $100,000 worth of value is exempted now in Texas. And so all of the individuals that we find that are living in properties that don't have those property exemptions, we give them information to go to the appraisal district and get their homesteads. It's a very valuable tool, and we think that that's what you would want us to do. We think that's what of all ours, and we think that's what we ought to be doing, is to try to inform taxpayers of their rights to get their exemptions. Let me talk to you about your tax role. So this is a snapshot view as of July 24 of your 2023 tax role. 78% of those properties were real properties, 5% minerals and 7% business personal property or personal property taxes. Your turnover for 2022 that you gave us, tax year 2022, was $469,649, and your turnover for 2023 in delinquents was $480,236. That's a 2.25% increase, very low increase. So your turnover is very steady, has been very steady from year to year. This is the status of the accounts that you have currently as of July 1, 2024, and it tells you the highest level of each of those accounts. So if we put something into bankruptcy, that's going to be our highest level, 1.64%, close to 2% is in bankruptcy. If we look over there in deferrals, 27.82% of your accounts are in deferral. And so added together, you're sitting at about 30% of all of your delinquent taxes are in a status that we cannot move on. So you take of that 400-something thousand you gave us to collect, you can just set aside 1/3 of that. Cannot be collected today, cannot be collected today. So it's pushed off into the future. Very interesting on this chart, it's under $500, it's 29.81%. And so the vast majority of your accounts, you're already at 60%, are going to either be uncollectible or hard to collect today. If it's under $500, it doesn't mean we won't collect. We're going to do mails, we're going to do phone calls, or we're probably not going to file a lawsuit on $500. It's too low. It costs about $1,500 to file a lawsuit by the time we do title work, and we turn around and have the court costing curbed. So it's probably not a good tool at that point, but when that property gets that $1,500 level, we're probably going to file a lawsuit if we've not heard from the taxpayer. Over 65 is 4%, you can just throw that into that deferral bucket. But now we're at 35% or in some status that we can't touch, actually 37%. Return mail, 5.78%, that's where the work is, we have to do that continuous work. We have 14.35% as of that date we're in lawsuits. 4.9% or 5% we're in judgments. And then finally, projected collections are the work that we can do outside of lawsuits, about 11.53%. And again, if we do our letters, send our notices, and we talk to them, and we don't get a payment agreement, and they're not current on a payment agreement, or they failed that payment agreement, then they may move into that litigation status. But that's a snapshot as of July 24. This is your top 25 accounts. I'd be happy to talk about those in the numbers on the left-hand side, but a couple of things I want you to see. If you look on the current status on the right-hand side, for the most part, the properties have been either suit filed or paid, or they've been sold, or there's a tax deferral. And if you look over there, that tax deferral list, there's several properties that are under tax deferral. And that list grows, because what happens is we have an aging population, and through the years, that deferral is going to continue and continue and continue. And that percentage in deferral grows every year. So it just means, it doesn't mean you won't collect or we won't collect. It just means you're going to have to defer that collection until that property is sold or the estate has been settled. Any questions on those accounts? I'll move on to the collection program and our lawsuit program. So in lawsuit filings, we filed suit on 28 accounts for $31,492. This is in the January to December calendar period. Lawsuits disposed on 64 accounts for $63,000. Letters mailed, 9,515 individual letters went out, and that was on an aggregate, an aggregate of $4 million in taxes. Doesn't mean you have total 4 million, it just meant we mailed, and we mailed, and we mailed, and we mailed, and it aggregates up to 4 million. And then lawsuits pending, 34 different lawsuits pending on $72,000 worth of delinquent taxes. 34 different lawsuits pending on $72,000 worth of delinquent taxes. In our tax sales, we had 10 properties that we sold for a total of 898,000. So just a little under 900,000 in tax sales. And total delinquent taxes collected during that period, 505,034. Again, this is a cost-free program to the city. Our fee is paid as a percentage, 15% on top of the delinquency, whatever that base tax and other penalty interest is that's due to the city. Talk a little bit more about our tax sale program. I'm moving pretty fast or if you want to stop me, do. But in our tax sale program, we're on the internet. We've been on the net for a while. So over on the upper right, you'll see www.lgbs.com. That's where you go to look at what we're about to sell. On the 15th of the month, on the 15th of January, we got published everything we're going to sell on the first Tuesday in February. And you find that on our website. You can see a map. You can see information on the account, the account number, the lawsuit number, the status of the property as far as what it looks like and then photographs if we have those of those properties. On the left-hand side, using that QR code, you can go to the www-smith.texas.sheriffssaleauctions.com and go to the Smith County Sheriff's Sale Auction. That is a fully online auction. It's a very robust platform. It has allowed us to sell more properties. Of course, everything is loaded digitally. It's a wonderful world we live in as long as the data is correct. It just flows through the system. It's loaded digitally. When it's loaded digitally, then you have, the buyers can go in there and buy in multiple counties at one time. They don't have to physically go like we used to have to do to a different courthouse at a different time all during the day on the first Tuesday. That same buyer can sit in their office or in their, at their computer and put in a bid all throughout the state of Texas on properties. And it's increased our amount of dollars that we collect on properties. It's increased the amount of dollars that the owners get in excess proceeds and it's increased the amount of excess proceeds that we're bringing back to the entities. That's money above and beyond the taxes that were paid during the tax sale. It's a very robust sale. It also lets us get all of those struck off properties on that sale just as quickly as we can. That way, we're not sitting holding vacant abandoned delinquent property struck off and held by the entities any longer than we have to. And then finally, what's the numbers?
Jim?
Yes, sir.
I see the Tyson House at the bottom right.
Yes, sir.
What's the, I realize it's coming up in February for sale.
It is.
What all lanes, what's the status of that one?
That one, it's for sale at the tax sale, it's the sheriff's sale, for that total amount of what's due against the property. The property tax code requires us to sell it for the adjudged value. So that's our minimum bid. If we receive an amount above that, then all of those amounts after the taxes. And there's a hierarchy into the property tax code for those to pay. So whatever we get for that property, then we'll go to pay the judgment. So all of the amounts into the judgment, hopefully will get paid. If we don't have a bidder, then the property will be struck off. And it's likely that we're either going to have, we may sell it or we may have no one bid on the minimum bid. If they don't, then it's struck off and the entities will own it together.
Okay.
I'll go back. Let's see here. This one more.
Where matters?
Here we go. Now I get some bottom line numbers. You know, show me the money is probably the bottom line number. You have an eight-year average collection rate of 100.75%. And you know, that one is a total of what you have levied, what comes in in total amount of taxes current in delinquents as a percentage of what you levied. It's very important for several reasons that that number be sufficient. First of all, you budget for that number and you're likely budgeting a number of 99% or so of collections and you've exceeded that. You're at 100.75. Also, it's important, if you ever do have any bonded indebtedness, it's important because your capacity to tax as well as the percentage of your collections go into determining how cheaply you are able to sell bonds if they are, have alarm-related bonded indebtedness. And so it's important for the community as a whole to make it as cheap as it can for the taxpayers. We'll look at three. I'm going to wrap it up with these three accounts. Look at three accounts. One of those successes we had was the sale of the West Gentry Holiday Inn Express. That one sold to a buyer. They are doing some work. I drove by the other day and looked at it. I'd like for them to be working faster. I'm sure you'd like for them to be working faster.
I would.
But they are doing some work.
Yes.
They are. And that was a success because not only were the taxes collected on that account, the taxes in the amount of $295,831, but the hotel occupancy taxes were collected in the amount of $178,721 as well as some other city cleanup and rolling lanes. So that was a success. There is an additional amount of revenue that came in in that sale too in excess proceeds. So we'll see if those are claimed by the previous owners. Then of course, we've just talked about the Tyson House and that's coming up on the first Tuesday in February at the tax sale. And then finally, this is an example of what's happened on the housing infill program. These are three lots. They weren't four lots. And back when the property was taken to a tax sale, no one bought them in that original sale. And so those four lots sat and they were so narrow that they really were not very buildable. And this is a sort of a story of kind of how the city has developed over time. A lot of times you have lots, they were vacant abandoned. No one was using them. They were growing up. This is over by College, College Hill Baptist Church. I may have gotten that wrong, but close, on Houston Street. And that, those lots were developable, but they needed to have some changes. So we had a buyer who came in and bought them and then replanted it as three lots to make buildable houses. And the interesting thing about this project is, is you get an economy of scale when you have three lots close together in which your subcontractors can bid similar to what they would bid on a custom home being built. And you can build three affordable homes. Looking at the value, that lot, 613 South Ross, was valued at $3,000 back when we took it to a tax sale. It's currently valued at that house at $214,000. It's a $211,000 value on one of those three lots for a total tax now of $3,600 coming into the entities. That's a success story. And that's how that housing infill program has been a success story through the years. That's my presentation. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them. Any questions for Jim?
Good job.
Well done.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you guys do.
So all you live on our people, do y'all want to leave?
[laughing]
You don't feel like you got to stay?
We'll do that slow, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Kyle, Z1.
Good morning, Mayor Council. First item we have today is a request for an annexation of land. This is just over 25 acres on the southwest side of the city. It's a future extension of the crossing subdivision. So it's off Cross Lake Boulevard and Old New Day Road. So it's 25 acres for residential development. The applicant's requesting this annexation in order to obtain city utilities to the future subdivision, which you see here. And so they, like I mentioned, they plan to bring this in as residential R1B zoning. Of the notices that we sent out, number returned in favor or in opposition to the request, this annexation's at the request of the property owner and the plan and commission recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? We do have Mark Priest here. If y'all have any questions for Mark or we let him off. No questions for Kyle?
No questions.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I did have a quick question. I want to ask about the utilities in the sewer. Is the developer going to be?
Mark, come in.
Good morning.
I hear you.
I have a short presentation.
[laughing]
Mark Priest.
No, I'm new. So I try to tend to go through things and then sometimes I don't understand. So I want to just be clear on the utilities as far as the water in the sewage. Is that something that the developer is going to be paying for? Because I did see a clause that where the city would be paying, but I saw also there's existing utilities adjacent already.
Yeah, so typically on most developments in this one in particular, the developer will extend the utilities for whatever's in the development and the impact of it. If there's a situation sometimes where the city is beneficial to oversize, then the city has a program that's just a pay and they'll require a developer to oversize and then they'll pay for a portion of it. But in this case, the developer's extending utilities. But we want to be on City of Tyler, all utilities. So that's where we want to keep the annexing for the unit. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mark.
So moved. I think there's District 2. District 2, right?
Yes.
You make a motion? I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Hawkins, second by Keller. Any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right. Z2.
This is another annexation request in the area just north of here. This is between Old New Day Road and Three Lakes Parkway. This is just over 11 acres of land. As you see here, it's currently adjacent to the city limits on the north side of the property. And so this annexation will also be for residential development, which is what you see in the area already. It's currently undeveloped. The developer will be also responsible to extend water sewer infrastructure into the development. And so they are proposing a planned development with a couple different areas here with standards of smaller lots, but still single-family detached development. This, I didn't mention on the first one, but I think it was acknowledged that these areas would be annexed into the city, but also brought into Council District Number 2 since they are adjacent to that district. Of the notices sent out, number returned in favor or in opposition and the plan, the zoning commission recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
No questions. No questions. I'm motioning for approval.
Second. Who said it?
Nichols.
Kyle, got a motion by Hawkins, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Z3.
This is an annual update that we make to the Unified Development Code. It's our 20-year city limits. It's actually intended to validate the city limits for the past 20 years and to protect the city from any possible legal challenge if that happened. And so every year, we update the 20 years from, you know, last year was 2003, this year's going to be 2004. And so what you see on the map here in the darker color is what the city limits were back as of December 31st, 2004. Current city limits are in the blue surrounding that. And so with that, the staff or the planning commission reviewed this update and recommends approval to this ordinance, which essentially validates the city limits as of December 31st, 2004.
Any questions for Kyle? Move to approve Z3.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McCallister. Any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. C4.
This is a request from RMF Multifamily to RPO Restricted Professional Office District to allow for the use of the property, continued use of the property as a medical office. The surrounding properties are a mixture of residential to the west and offices, office uses to the north and east. This request is essentially a cleanup item. The property was legally non-conformant as an office use. Just as a reference, the multifamily district used to allow for office uses. That's why you see there on Turtle Creek Hall, those office developments currently zone multifamily, but they are currently legally non-conformant. So this property's coming into conformance with the UDC. It's going to establish the Future Land Use Guide as Office, which is how it's been used in the past. As you see here, it's developed with that. And so we didn't receive any opposition from any neighbors and the plan and commission recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z4.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McCallister. Any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Kyle, is that where Victory Lake was located? Yes. Back in the Tyler's first water supply.
Yes, I believe so.
Victory Lake, which is right there where those hallows are. Bit of history. Continue. Z4.
I'll include the map next time showing the previous lake.
The mayor used to swim there.
Yes.
[laughing]
That's apparent, yes. This next item is a zone change from multifamily to single-family on Claude Street. It's to allow for this property to be developed with a single-family home. It's currently multifamily. It's a carryover from previous zoning where multifamily would also allow for a single-family development, but the current code does not permit that. And so they plan to build a single-family home on this property, which is generally consistent with all the other lots along Claude Street, which are primarily single-family as well. This request is consistent with the land use guide. Because you see the property here is currently undeveloped and they plan to build a single-family home. We did not receive any letters in opposition from any of the neighbors and the plan and commission recommended approval.
Questions for Kyle?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Hawkins, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Z6.
This is a zone change request from industrial, which is M1 and M2, to PCD Plant Commercial District. This is where the area in green you see here, this is off of Earl Campbell Parkway in the mosaic district. The applicant plans to develop additional office and retail, office retail building on this site here. It is consistent with the written narrative that was approved for the property to the southwest. And primarily, the narrative just restricts any residential uses for this property. And that's to ensure there's compatibility with the existing industrial users in that area. So this is just a continuation of the plant commercial district that's to the southwest for office retail and the plan and commission recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? We also have the applicant here. If anybody wants to ask any questions of the applicant, are we going to let him off easy?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Hawkins, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Z7.
This is a zone change from C2 General Commercial to R1B Single Family. This is off Jordan Street, just near Gentry Parkway. This request is to bring the property into conformance. It's currently a single-family home as is the other, as are the other properties on that side of the street. The zoo is to the east and the south of this property. This would amend the Future Land Use Guide to Single Family, but as you see here, these properties aren't developed as a single-family residential. And so this will bring the current land use into conformance with the UDC as a single-family home. Of the letters we sent out, number returned in favor or in opposition and the plan and commission recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by McCallister, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank Kyle. R1. Lynn.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
The Parks Department is applying for a grant through the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. This is a trails grant and it will be matched up to 80% of the total project cost. It'll be used to enhance Windsor Grove Nature Park. To apply for this funding, a resolution authorizing application must be approved by the governing body of the applicant according to the grant application criteria. So the request is that the city council consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for a recreational trails grant, authorizing the city manager to take all actions needed to receive and expend grant funds.
So Windsor Park, when that was dedicated, does it have to, it has to remain trails? Is that right?
It has to remain a nature park. And so there is a trail currently there. It's just really dilapidated and in some places it's non-existent. And so we were hoping to
Well, I was just going to tell you thank you. The president's been asking about this for us, so I have something to tell him.
We hope we get the grant.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Hawkins, second by Wynn, any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. R Two.
The Parks Department is also requesting adoption of a resolution. We are filing a grant application through Texas Parks and Wildlife for a boating access The grant provides a 75% matching. It will be used for Faulkner Park Pond. Some of the things that it'll be used for will be, let's see, we are going to enhance the pond and add educational items and elements and foster environmental stewardship. This is being led and helped funded by Genicov. They have a letter saying that they will provide the remaining 25% of the matching funds to help us with this project. So the request is that the City Council consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for a boating access grant and authorizing the city manager to take all actions needed to receive and expand grant funds.
Any questions for Lynn?
I do. It's not a question. I'd just like to, thanks for being creative, finding ways to keep making improvements to the parks.
Thank you.
Doing a good job.
Thank you.
And I move to approve. R Two.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols, any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Lynn. Good job.
Thank you.
Kedry.
There. Five minutes or less?
Did you bring the enthusiasm?
Okay, I'm done with my first question. Okay.
Behind you.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, you have, Mayor, Council, you have had a O1 before you, is request City Council consider the adoption of an ordinance amending fiscal year 24, 25 budget to provide funding for various community development block grant, home, housing choice voucher activities. As you may remember, I think a couple meetings back, I brought a budget amendment to you for general fund utilities. So this is primarily, or all grant budget amendments that we're asking for you all to roll forward. And I've just got a summary of the total amounts here on this slide here. It's the housing grant we're requesting to roll forward, about 843,000. That's just housing, choice voucher, and tenant protection. CDBG, we're looking at rolling forward 600, almost 613,000. That's public facilities demolition. Home grant, we're looking at a large portion of that is new construction. So it is recommended City Council consider adopting ordinance amending FY 24, 25 budget to provide funding to complete various community development block grant, home, and housing choice voucher programs.
Any questions for Kedry?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by McCallister, second by Curtis, any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Kedry. Michael Howell, M1.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Our next item that we have is a request to award a contract for a light rail study. This is for the Tyler Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. A light rail study for what we are talking about, the inception for this came from a lot of questions that were received through a previous project that the NPO did that looked at the usage of the railroad going throughout the entire county. And primarily, the first portion that was being looked at, that had the most questions, was a section of rail line that goes from downtown to midtown. Right now, there is one train per week that goes along that section, and it typically goes about a Tuesday morning. And there was a little bit of additional research that the staff did as far as other communities, what had been done as far as, for instance, the city of Denton has partnered with Union Pacific, who is the owner of the rail lines in our area, that has been able to actually implement some small, actual passenger rail, little trolley systems, things like that, that has been done with the partnership. So they didn't actually purchase the rail lines, but it's been a shared option that has been done, that they are able to do when the track is not in line by being used by Union Pacific. So the first thing we want to look at is kind of do a feasibility analysis, look at a short range and see, is this something that could potentially work in Tyler? Try to do some research on what were the details of the contracts that was made between Union Pacific and the cities, and if there's other areas in Texas that have done that. So first of all, it's looking at a short-range look at feasibility of it, and if that looks like something that the community would be interested in, is also doing a long-range look at the area. There is a proposal to try to put in a high-speed rail line that would go from Dallas-Fort Worth all the way to Atlanta, Georgia. And that is going along the Amtrak line that currently goes through north of Smith County, just barely crosses it, but has a stop currently in Mineola. If that were to go through and we were able to start to get some light rail service, also try to look at a long range of, could we potentially connect up to that rail line up there if it became a viable option at some point in the future? So that's really what we're looking at, is kind of the two steps as far as looking at some short-range feasibility and potentially some long-range planning if that came about. There was a process that the NPO has gone through to solicit what was called a statement of qualifications from various firms. There were five submittals that were received, and there was a staff review and ranking of those firms. The top qualified firm that was based off of the grading that was done was Kimley-Horn and Associates. And the entire amount for the contract is $150,000 to perform the light rail study. Again, this is being done through the NPO, so it is going to be 100% funded through the NPO's grant. However, the city of Tyler is the fiscal agent for the NPO, which means that the city of Tyler pays for the funds upfront, and then it is reimbursed through that grant. So because of that, we still follow all of the city of Tyler's fiscal policies, which means that any contract exceeding 50,000 goes to City Council for approval. So that is what we're requesting here. So again, the request is to award the amount of the contract for the light rail study to Kimley-Horn in the amount of $150,000.
The part of that presentation that probably most intrigued me to me is the leg from downtown to midtown. And I know that in our discussions in the past with the operator of the railroad, there's been some concern regarding liability, you know, the railroad won't let us use it, maybe you can do a trail next to the railroad. As far as the feasibility study, are we actually going to contact the railroad operator to see if this is even a possibility from, in the very beginning?
The discussions that we've been having with the consultants is to try to do more of the research on how, more working with the other cities who have made these deals in the past, and kind of know what to ask before reaching out to it, before reaching out to Union Pacific. So pretty much trying to make sure, how do we get our ducks in a row and know what to ask before going in to start having in those discussions with Union Pacific?
That makes sense. I mean, you got to have a plan. You just can't go to Union Pacific and say, we want to do it. But it'd be nice to know if we can do it.
I mean, we've had struggles with them just at the railroad crossings that are in such disrepair that we need, that they basically kind of a blind eye on it now, we're having to take care of. I know that it's been a struggle. So I guess if a plan is there that we can take to them, they might listen to us.
That's the goal, is to try to have a short-range plan, to try to say, here is the proposal, but also to try to learn from what other communities who have been successful in getting these done before, to know what to take forward to Union Pacific, to try to give us the best possibility for having that success.
Michael, I am so excited that this is on our agenda today, because we've been talking about it for the last five years. So I'd like to see something from north going downtown as well.
That's great.
Because of all the growth that's around the railroad in the North Tyler area. So thank you for bringing this to our.
Thank you.
And you bring up a good point, because hasn't the railroad been abandoned up on adjacent to MLK?
It has not been abandoned, and that's, that is some of the direction.
That's a legal word, as far as abandoned.
Okay, so what is it called?
Yes, the railroad gets very touchy about these things. It's not, it is not active, but so they, yeah, have a chip on their shoulder if you use the word abandoned.
They still own it.
Yes.
Yeah.
But, and you don't mind if we make, just a quick point, I want to make sure that we kind of bring this back in line as far as with the NPO action item or component of it.
Right. To elaborate, yes, this is an NPO item, so it does cover the entire NPO boundary as far as doing the analysis. So that would include our other communities, and, you know, we do have other opportunities that are no longer in use and actively used, let's say. And to elaborate a little bit more on the strategy, you know, the game plan, we have learned through some of our other plans and coordinating with other consultants that are very well-versed in working with the railroad on, you know, you really have to have a good sales pitch if you're to be successful. So part of what this plan will do is investigate, what would that sales pitch do? Because, you know, the railroad was here before we were, and, you know, they're not likely to want to give away any potential for revenue for now and then maybe 100 years from now. So we have to come up with something very compelling, and that's what this will also help us work on that sales pitch and identify those opportunities that have been successful in other communities. So with that, we're looking to approve this plan for the entire NPO to study that.
And the NPO Policy Committee and Technical Committee also?
Yes, they've approved this and are recommending it for approval.
This will come from the NPO's funding source, not from the city of Tyler.
Got you. Any other questions for Michael or Heather?
I've got one. The other metropolitan areas that have used these plans actively, are they staffed trains? Are they driverless? Or are they, do they have operators on the trains? Or are they like it's DFW, you know, unstaffed?
It's AI.
Sorry?
It's probably a mixture, but one of the things that we'll be investigating is what are the various options? And so, yeah, because the NPO wouldn't operate this type of transportation, but we certainly would do the planning to investigate our opportunities.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Is today your birthday?
Yes, sir.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Council.
All right, honor and a motion on M1.
So moved.
Got a motion by McCallister, second by Hawkins, any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. M Two, Paul.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to visit with you this afternoon. I have M Two, the MS Four Permit Renewal, and the updated stormwater master plan go along with that. Just a quick little background, the MS Four stands for the Municipal Separate Stormwater System. So this is basically our stormwater master plan, it deals with our stormwater from an environmental perspective and is a requirement of the TCEQ and EPA. The first permit the city engaged in was in '07. It's been renewed three times, and this is a fourth permanent cycle. The current plan we've got with updates was developed in 2014, and with each update, we need to review it, we need to update it accordingly to meet any new requirements. The NOI, the Notice of Intent, is required to request the permit to submit to the TCEQ by a signatory authority, the mayor, the city manager, to obtain the authorization to discharge stormwater. The stormwater master plan includes best management practices to address stormwater quality. This new plan adds, well, it doesn't add, but there are now eight groupings of best management practices. The public education outreach, public involvement, illicit discharge, construction site, which is the most visible, post-construction stormwater management, pollution prevention, and good housekeeping for municipal operations, industrial stormwater sources, this is a new one for us, and authorization for municipal construction activities. The changes this bill around for the MS Four Permit, the MS Four General Permit, they separated the public education and public involvement pieces, make them more distinct, more unique. There are, they get into a little bit more specific BMP requirements in terms of identifying, you need to have a minimum number based on your level. We're a Level Four now with our population being over 100,000. They identify target audiences that, the bigger you are, the more target audiences that you need to reach. So we are reaching out to all of our residents, but they want us to specifically maybe go after schools or developers, kind of industrial sites, businesses, just what works best for the municipality. And then, again, I mentioned specific BMPs, now we're a Level Four. Some of the changes that we are incorporating into this new stormwater master plan, we've got some signage and targeted advertising, we're going to try and expand on that prevention, right? It's worth a pound of cure, as they say, and that is one thing that they recognize. Additional customer training, customers being contractors, developers, residents, anyone that is our customer that discharges stormwater. Educational booth and display, I think that's an easy way to reach out to the public, maybe set something up like Smith County Fair, or we need to investigate that. Any of these new requirements, we've got the permit term to figure out how we're going to implement them and how we're going to engage and make them successful. We need to identify our high priority discharge areas. So if we've got areas with illegal dumping that we know about, or we have problems with sanitary sewer overflow, things like that, we need to identify them. We've got an evolved GIS department, so we've got a head start on this one. We've already pretty much been doing this one. It's just a little bit more formalized and have to work a Level Four. Now, this is probably the biggest one, is procedures to reduce the discharge of floatables. So all those water bottles, all those cups, all that stuff you see out there, we've got to figure out a way to try and eliminate those. And again, we've got the permit term, which is five years, to develop this and put this into play, figure out how we're going to pay for it, because this isn't going to just happen for free. So that's probably the biggest thing. That post-construction control structure inspection program, so any of these detention ponds, that some of these, like the Walmarts have, or that we were part in development, we need to have a more formalized program to inspect them, make sure they're being maintained, make sure that they are operating them like they're supposed to. We have had a few problems in this area because we haven't been inspecting them and keeping up them. Now we're required to do so. Pesticide and fertilizer program procedures, obviously, they want us to reduce and figure out any way we can to reduce pesticide applications, fertilizer applications, so we'll be reviewing that. And then the industrial stormwater sources, this is another, I guess, bigger change, but not as impactful as the floatables, but we now have to look at our industrial sources, landfill, you know, our landfill, and pay attention to what's going on there. Reach out to our industrial clients that have their own discharge permits and make sure that they're following those permits, because they do discharge into our MS Four system. And I'll pause there for some questions before I make my own communication.
Any questions for Paul?
Well, I'll just say, since we're, I don't know if this has to do with this directly, it obviously will impact it, but the communication component, and I would say the communication that's going on with the Keaton drainage.
Yes, sir.
Bill is excellent. I mean, I think it's just a fantastic job, because I think so often citizens get frustrated when they feel like they don't know what's happening, they're just addressing that. And if they do have a problem, I don't know who to talk to. So it's also addressing that, and maybe they'll call you instead.
They are.
But anyway, no, seriously, you're doing a good job in that.
Thank you.
Any other questions before he makes his recommendation?
All right, it is recommended then that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to execute the Notice of Intent and submit to the revised, the revised higher Texas Pollute and Discharge Inflation System Phase Two, MS Four Stormwater Management Plan to the Texas. city manager to execute the notice of intent and submit to the revised, the revised higher Texas pollutant discharge elimination system phase two, MS4 stormwater management plan to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality.
Move to approve into C.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller, any further discussion? Pause on favors, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, we're down to the consent agenda, given one of our previous presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda is written.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols, any further discussion? Pause on favors, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. City Mayor should approve.
Thank you, Mayor. On January 9th, the city had 13 employees participate in a collaborative training opportunity. City U trained, or partnered with UT Arlington to offer free onsite CDL training to city employees. The Train the Trainer course was presented by the University of Texas at Arlington Public Works Institute and is designed for municipalities and counties in Texas interested in offering behind-the-wheel entry-level driver training to their staff. Having access to in-house trainers is an invaluable asset to the city and has potential to save our employees thousands of dollars in outside training calls when seeking their CDL. So we're very excited about this program to be able to continue to get our employees, kind of elevate them and also provide lots of drivers out there that we need for our vehicles and projects. The 2025 asphalt enhancement project is underway with significant portions of the pavement base repairs, valley gutter replacements and curb and gutter replacements already completed. Ongoing work with this project will provide new pavement surfaces on all types of roads from major collector roads such as Jeff Davis to neighborhood roads like South Forest. Even some of the alleyways throughout town will receive new pavement. Many of the collector streets will also receive new striping to accommodate additional bike lanes, new turn lanes, and/or altered lane configurations for more efficient traffic flow. Tyler Transit launched the full city micro transit on January 13th. As expected, it's been a learning curve. Tyler Transit is continuing to monitor fuel mileage savings and ridership trends. Each day has shown to get easier for dispatchers and riders. Ridership is increasing daily. The average ride duration has consistently dropped as well. Our staff has been actively promoting the Tyler Transit app and this shows that the increasing number of app installs. While ridership has increased, our phone volume has decreased. And then finally, we want to recognize as far as our own Mayor Warren, he received at Heart of Tyler's annual meeting, Mayor Don Warren was honored with prestigious Brick Award for his exceptional leadership and steadfast support of the organization's mission to revitalize downtown Tyler. This recognition celebrates his dedication to enhancing the district's civic, social, and economic vitality, a cornerstone of the community's ongoing growth and success. So well done there.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other comments or questions for him before we adjourn? All right. I understand the question to adjourn. So moved. All right.